Please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Stanley Bell and Mike Spor. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King, Mr. Schuster.
President.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. McCandrew.
President.
Mr. Smurl.
Here. Dispense, reading of minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, reviewed July 30th, 2025. 3B, overtime report for all departments for July 2025 as provided by City Controller and received August 1st, 2025. 3C, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report for year-to-date August 8th, 2025, and year-to-date comparison report for August 7th, 2024 through August 8th, 2025. 3D, check received from Comcast representing the CATV franchise fee for quarter 2 of 2025. 3E, correspondence dated July 31st, 2025 from City Business Administration regarding Department of Public Works budget transfer. 3F, correspondence dated August 7th, 2025 from City Business Administration regarding Department of Public Works budget transfer. 3G, ARPA July 2025 Quarterly Report dated August 13th, 2025 from City ARPA Director. 3H, Controller's Report for the month ending July 31st, 2025. 3I, correspondence received August 18th, 2025 regarding Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Quarterly Investment Performance Review for the second quarter of 2025. 3J, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, reviewed July 25th, 2025. 3K, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held July 16th, 2025. 3L, minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held July 16th, 2025. 3M, agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held August 20th, 2025. 3N, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting held July 16th, 2025. 3O, minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting held July 16th, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third-order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. First of all, welcome, welcome back after our break. A couple of things that are, that are coming up that I wanted to shout out tonight. First off, over the summer, they were going to have a day to honor Jimmy Connors up at Na'ag with the music. But that had to be, I believe it rained and they had to reschedule it, so it's been rescheduled to Saturday, September 20th. So it's going to be Jimmy Connors Day at Na'ag, and that'll be taking place from 1:00 PM, I think, up until 6:00 PM or maybe later. They've got a number of bands and groups that will be playing, but then they've got some other activities too for families, so there'll be face painting, a magician, balloons. So it sounds like it'll be a really fun day up at the park, just wanted to make sure to mention that. And then towards the end of the month, Scranton Fringe Festival will be having their, their annual festival, and that'll be taking place from September 25th until October 5th, so if you're interested in going to any of the shows or events for Fringe, you could go to scrantonfringe.org to find out more about tickets for that. That's all.
I just have a quick message from a resident that relayed this to me and asked me to read it. So it says, "It was another exceptional job by the police and the sheriffs at LaFesta. All days were very secure, high police presence. It is so great to have something so wonderful to bring the community together. Please pass the word along to all of them. Great job." So I agree. That's all I have.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and just want to welcome everyone back. I didn't see an official announcement in the newspaper, so I'm not sure how many people knew that tonight was the first night of reconvening after vacation. But while we're on vacation, of course, you know, it gives us the opportunity to think back of what's gone on this past month at City Council. One of the things that I was glad to see a lot that went on in the city with the crosswalks that were painted and all, which was ready for the kids to go back to school. However, then that prompted my question and my concern for the street signs. And I was trying to look on the, on the website to see, our city website, to see what percentage of the street signs are up and done. I couldn't find anything on there, so maybe you can help me find where that is and to get the information. And I know it's just not me, because over the summer, whenever I run into people, they'll say, "Any more street signs up, Norma? Any more street signs?" I say, "I don't know as, as much as you know." So if someone can direct me to the website where I can find the information about the percentage of the, of the street signs that have been done. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was the, was the kids going back to school. No, let me back up. The wall up at the Radisson. I did see also on the news that money was located to prepare, repair that wall there at the Radisson. I know I've spoken about it, and I know others have spoken about it at the disrepair, and what a, you know, such as eyesore to the city as you're coming up Lackawanna Avenue and to run into that. So I did read over the summer that money has been located and that will be repaired. So I'm looking forward to seeing that particular situation taken care of. And also, I was also approached, you know, people think just because I come to City Council that I'm a City Council. I'm not. But it seems that the pothole situation, there's a pothole at the corner of Ash and Prescott. The person has called and reported it to the pothole hotline, and it's still there. And you know, that's right across the street from Mansour's, so if you're getting ready to take the right-hand turn there, you're going to hit that pothole because there's cars parked there, and you've got to take a wide turn to get around that corner. So, you know, should you just keep calling and reporting it, or, you know, just let us know how that whole system works? And the next thing that I was concerned about, and it's a thank you to the community for all the help that this kids of the city received on preparing them to go back to school. There were so many places that, as I rode around the city, over at the farmer's market at Na'ag Park, at the Ant's Hotel, you know, that were giving out the plastics bookbags, backpacks for the kids, and they were filled with the supplies. Such a help that was to the parents of the city. So, you know, kudos to any group that was out there and prepared and helped to get those kids back to school. So the thing that I thought about as I was thinking about how great the first day of school for the kids, I thought, "That was great. We've prepared their backpacks, we've given them supplies." And I thought about their hunger and their food supply. So I did question who is eligible for the breakfast and lunches at the school, and I was told that any of the kids at school can get breakfast and lunch. But they said the problem comes with the time constraints, that I guess there's so many kids in line to get the food that they run out of time before it's their first class. Now, I don't have any kids in school, so I don't know if that's true or not, so maybe someone can enlighten me on that. But along with that, I thought, "It's time for another food drive." So we're going to be having another food drive at Na'ag Park the end of September, and it's going to be the two days as we usually do, because we thought, and I thought, you know, when I approached the SMRA about it, I said, "Can we do another food drive?" Because I'm sure that the food pantries that we supplied with food in February is probably down. And with the kids going back to school, and if they don't get a chance to have something to eat at school, and they get home, they're going to be looking for something to eat. So we're going to be having another food drive. I'll have the flyers ready next week. I don't have them ready right now, but if you can just mark your calendars, and a lot of the stores right now, and I know that the prices are up on food, but they're doing, you know, buy one, get one, or buy four, get two. You know, just think about those in need when you're out there at the store, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. See if I can find the, the street signs, the percentage, and email it to you?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Frank, Mr. Oldenburg, will you also send in Ash and Prescott for a pothole again Saturday and tomorrow?
I may note of it.
Thank you. Kathy? Kathy, is the, that plugged in? Yeah, the timer, there's no clock. Okay. Yeah, I, I just, I can't see anything. That's fine if it's, if it's not on, okay. Yeah. The timer. Kathy, so can you just watch the timer for me then? I, I don't know, I don't see anything. You're on, Frank.
Is it on? It's on. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Frankie.
Somebody moved it on.
Oh, you're off. Frank, you went off. Okay, you're on again. Nope, it's off.
It's off again.
Okay. Nope, nope.
Yes. Okay, he said it's on. Now, the only problem is to get this, to sit over time.
There you go. Plug is damaged.
Thank you, Frank. Joan Hodouanis?
Joan Hodouanis, Scranton. And Mr. Smurl, there was a name you should have mentioned during your moment of reflection, so I will mention him. Jerome Martin Mulaney was born on April 8th, 1926, in Scranton. He enlisted in the US Navy and was assigned to the destroyer USS Glennon. The Glennon was part of the Armada during the Normandy invasion of France in 1944. Jerome was killed in action on June 8th, 1944, when the USS Glennon struck a German mine. He was awarded a Purple Heart for his sacrifice. His remains were recently recovered and identified by the US Navy. A viewing will be held on September 3rd, tomorrow, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM in the Thomas J. Hughes Funeral Home, 1240 St. Anne Street, Scranton. Interment will be in St. Mary Cemetery near his parents, and he will be accorded full military honors. Jerome was only 18 years old when he died for his country. He couldn't vote, he couldn't drink, but he could die for his country. Now, one of the reasons that I mention it, it took 81 years for his remains to be recovered and identified. And the third Friday in every September is National POW MIA Recognition Day. That's September 19th. Last year, the city flew the POW MIA flag in front of City Hall. I hope they do again this year. And on September 19th at 4:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial near Scranton High School, there will be a ceremony recognizing all our POWs and MIA. Does anyone know the current count of how many service members remain missing? Eighty-one thousand, and I wonder how many are from Scranton? Just a thought. I looked at the Capitol budget. Again, I was pleased to see the amount of information, the transparency, but I had a thought. Many streets in Scranton have no sidewalks, and I'm a pedestrian now for 13 years, and of course, schoolchildren are by nature pedestrians. I wonder, do we have any ordinances or regulations that tell us where we should have sidewalks? Who is responsible for them? Because I, I know I have to walk on the street many times, just going from here to the prison for a prison ward. How many children have to walk on the streets? I know Ron Elman has pointed out a lack of sidewalks in North Scranton. Maybe somebody could look at that as a future project, like Norma's street signs and other initiatives. I looked at the Controller's Report for July, and under Court Awards, we paid $285,000 to Don Scartelli Construction. Was that the lawsuit involving the splash pad low bidding?
There were three lawsuits involved, and that all rolled together.
Okay. Are we done with lawsuits from Scartelli?
I believe we are. I know we paid out and he paid, he paid us, so.
Okay. We had a budget of $400,000 for Court Awards. We're down to $20,000, so hopefully we have no more coming. Are we making progress on a union contract for DPW?
I asked this morning, and I was told mid-September is the next meeting.
And how about progress on the 2024 audit? Will it come in on or before 30th of September?
All the authorities' audits are complete and all turned in to our auditor, so they're in the hands of ours.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
They're all complete, all of the authorities have them completed, so they're all turned in. Now it's up to our auditor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Good evening, Council. I just brought this to remind you that 32 people last, this past winter, lost their homes. Eight of them were Scrantonians. The 22nd, August 22nd paper had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of names being allowed to stay in their homes, not paying taxes. One guy that lost his house was across the street of me, $3,500. Another was $8,000. The rest of them were big sums. There's a Robert Tony in this list. One property he owns, $119,000. There's another fellow, Vincent Spartani, $152,700 on one property. This is, this is outrageous. A man lost his house for $3,500, and these people are still here year after year. This Dennis Smith LLC, he, he got 22 properties, owes a fortune on. There's another one, 24 properties LLC. These people don't pay the taxes, they rent out the property. Nothing's being done. They're not condemned. This city is just so far out of tune to the people paying for everything. Now, last week's paper has Marty Flynn gives Page $200,000 for downtown, a grant. Scranton tomorrow gives another $200,000 grant. Page took $240,000 in the walkability. That's $640,000 for a, what, a tenth of the city? No sidewalks for neighborhoods, no curbs, not even a street sweeper goes by anything. And the 2500 block, since they tore down the Smith House, it's overgrown. I went up there a couple of weeks ago with a clipper, trying to make a path for the kids that go to school in the morning. It, it, this, this city has just gone to pot, except downtown. You people... I talked to, by episode of getting names. Council, is it well-liked? Yeah. I only had one lady throw me out, tell me off. She says, "I'm a straight Democrat." She said, "I don't want you to..." She knows me, she's a block from my house. She said, "I don't want people like you in the government." Everybody else, I didn't have no problems with. I had some people ask me to come in for beer, water, cokes, get out of the sun. People... I think, in my opinion, Paige Cognetti is just the worst mayor in all 50 American states. I don't, of any city, town, village, hamlet. And if I'm wrong, if she's not the worst American mayor, you tell me who is in black and white, and I'll apologize to her. This is... I watched the kids this morning. They're in the street on this 2500 block because of illegally parked cars on the 2515 house. The 2515 house is a dump. And they, they, they have garbage all week long out there. A couple of weeks ago, the city gave me a letter for having no top on my garbage can. How many garbage cans in this city don't have tops on them? Probably 100,000, 200,000? I got a ticket for it.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, City resident, homeowner. 5F, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a grant application by the City of Scranton for one, over $1,200,000, to use towards Lackawanna Avenue Pedestrian and Bike Improvements Project. Is that also going to include paving Lackawanna Avenue?
I believe it includes paving, taking that Middle Island out, lighting, curb.
Okay, because I complained about Lackawanna Avenue for I don't know how long, plus there's, I hope they're going to mark the streets correctly now, so people know when to turn or what, where to turn and go straight. Next thing. Complained about this for I don't know how long. Something's got to be done about these ATVs. It's just getting worse and worse and worse. Where I live, for almost once a week at least, these two idiots come by my house on two wheels, really, really loud. One of these days, I hope they tip over and hurt themselves, because it's ridiculous. What really took the cake was a few weeks ago, on August 14th. I'm driving south on North Main Avenue, about two blocks from Alessi's Gas Station, if anybody's familiar with that. Coming towards me the other way, passing cars in the middle of the street is an ATV. Coming down the middle of the street, passing cars on North Main Avenue, about 4:30 in the afternoon, it was really busy. And luckily, there were no cars parked on my right, I was able to pull over. If I couldn't pull over, that guy would have ran right into me. My car would have been wrecked, but he probably would have been dead. That's the, the most unbelievable thing I've ever seen. Passing cars on North Main Avenue. Something's got to be done. I don't know what can be done, I don't know, police aren't allowed to chase them. Somebody's got to come up with legislation that takes the responsibility away from the police officers if they're chasing them and somebody gets injured or killed. There's got, the, the police have to be able to chase these people. Somebody driving down North Main Avenue, passing cars on an ATV, it's unconscionable. Something's got to be done. Next. Last week, I'm driving through Dunmore, and I see a City of Scranton City Inspector car driving through Dunmore. Why is a Scranton City Inspector car driving through Dunmore? I know the fire department loans Dunmore equipment if their fire engines are down, whatever. Are we loaning City Inspector cars now to Dunmore? I think that should be looked into, why the City Inspector was driving in Dunmore when it should be here in town doing their job. in town doing their job? Lastly, the hole on Dorothy Street. Last meeting in July, I brought it up that the DPW worker talked to me about it. He asked me if I knew who filled it in. I said, no. And he, it must have been him. He painted by the hole. It's a, it's a call PA1 DPW. I don't know what that means. But he put the date. It was July 23rd. Today's September 2nd. Nothing is still done. And I walk my dog there every day. And almost every day, I'm picking up the horses that the police put there that I think probably kids are knocking them over because they have nothing better to do. So, but being a good neighbor I am, I pick them up every day. I love my neighborhood and I try to take care of it. Something's got to be done about that hole. I mean, it's filled in, but you could see it, it's sinking. And you could see the blacktop around where they filled it in is cracking. So those horses can't be moved or, you know, somebody's, a car is going to fall in there. So something, this council has to do some, something and get in touch with somebody and then get that hole taken care of. Because before you know it, winter will be here. They'll have to plow that street. And all the police horses are blocking that, that area. So I don't know what the solution is, but it's, we're going like a month and a half since the DPW worker painted that sign. Nothing's been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, will you send it in again?
I will, sir.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is that I really think the city and the mayor should contact Griffith Pond and come up with, I think they're overwhelmed. I called them the other day about some stray animals in the block I live in. They're buried up there. You know, I blame the state legislature for not addressing the problem with strays. I'd just like to say that there's a lot of stray cats in my neighborhood. I've had some of them fixed at my own expense, but I think that street cats is overwhelmed. And I really think there's a, there's a very serious problem with city government not addressing that problem. And it'd be nice to see something happen. The other thing I have here is, you know what? I think it's time for the president to write and get rid of, you know, write an executive order and get rid of all the authorities in all the states. Give the residents an opportunity to get rid of every single one of them. You know, I sit and I listen to people talk about their taxes and then you look at the way the government functions. The City of Scranton is saddled with so much debt, it's ridiculous. And the residents, 30 houses in Scranton pay more tax than the university gives in lieu of taxes to the city. All the nonprofits are running roughshod over the residents. And the poorest of the poor in the city, struggling to survive as we have a delusional counsel and mayor. You know, I think it's time to pick up an ink pen and head into court. I've done it. I mean, I wouldn't like to be Mr. Hinton because I'm not thinking he's having a lot of fun with my lawsuit against ECTV. I think really he's pulling his hair out. I think the federal judge is too. But I don't expect much from the federal judge because I think he's going to try to shield certain people. But that's all right because that's what a court of appeals is for. But, you know, I'm really troubled by all the things that are happening in the city. As I grow older and I look around, people used to talk about how people who came to council meetings were wasting their time. But now we find that the people who weren't coming to council meetings, they're pulling their hair out. They can't afford to keep their homes. They can't pay their taxes. They can't believe the erosion of city government. And, you know, we had comments here today about city sidewalks and curbs. The federal government, even though I didn't need to do this because my father was a master carpenter, sent me to school to be a cement finisher and to build, make curbs and sidewalks in this city during the Hickey administration. And he killed the program. Even the person that was teaching him asked me why I was there because he wasn't teaching me anything. But, you know, it's nice to want to turn around and contribute something to your city. The only problem is we don't have elected officials who care about the people. Jimmy Connors was probably one of the few. I hope everybody attends that thing at Naught Park for him because he was a great mayor. I wanted to do an interview with him on ECTV. That's how impressed I was with his leadership ability. But we don't see that. We have a, we have a mayor that wants to serve in Congress who locked her constituents out of their city hall and isn't competent of doing her job and lives outside the city. And not even the council's concerned about that. It's amazing. You know, finally we have a president who understands that it's time to stand this country back up. You see what he did in DC. I wonder if our crime statistics are real. You know, I wonder who's serving who here? I remember moving all the old people out of their houses because they couldn't afford their taxes and nothing's changed. More blight, more poverty, more public corruption, and more elected officials who want to run for an office and can't do the job. And I really think the residents need to pick up an ink pen and a law book and proceed to the court. Sooner or later, the court is going to have to respond to the problems we have here because we're bankrupt. But I hope you do something about the strays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Virgil Argenta?
Virgil Argenta, Scranton resident, city council candidate. Can we add another name to the timer reflection? Scranton Police Department Captain Vincent Cardamone. I'm sure we already heard the news, but I would like to bring to your attention an important matter. The mayor has announced her candidacy for reelection as mayor of Scranton while also announcing she will be running for the United States Congress District 8 seat. Pursuing both positions simultaneously is a clear example of the lack of focus and dedication she has for the City of Scranton's needs. One example is the DPW is still working without a contract. I won't get into the other list. As a resident, I'm frustrated that city issues are neglected in favor of personal ambition or uninformed voting. It's time that this council took a stand and demands our officials puts Scranton first. Remember, the people did not elect a business administrator to run this city. We elected a mayor. I urge you to consider the following. If our mayor is willing to divide our attention between two offices, how can we trust that she will effectively serve our city? It's our responsibility as citizens to hold our elected officials accountable and ensure that they're working in the best interest of Scranton. Our city deserves a council that provides leadership and stability. I would like to express concerns regarding the potential impact on city resources and taxpayer funds as the mayor seeks both reelection and a congressional seat. It is essential to establish explicit guidelines and oversight to ensure that municipal assets are not going to be utilized for her campaign purposes. Requesting that city council consider implementing, implementing measures to monitor and distinguish cell phone usage and expenses for official city business versus her campaign activities, vehicle mileage and expenditures related to administrative duties versus campaign events for her. Credit card transactions for city operations as opposed to campaign-related spending for her campaigns. Also requesting that city council consider ensuring that no city employees or resources are utilized in any capacity for the mayor's campaign activities during working hours. This includes, but not limited to, city employees' time and labor use of city facilities, equipment, supplies, or any other city resources that can be perceived as supporting a campaign. By doing so, we can ensure that the mayor's campaign is fully separated from city business in that the taxpayers' resources are protected. It's essential that we maintain the highest level of transparency and accountability in our city's operation during this dual campaign event. And we need your help in this, counsel. By implementing these measures, transparency and accountability can be maintained, helping to prevent taxpayer funds for being used for her campaign purposes. Remember, if she leaves midterm, the council president takes over. We all witnessed the lack of leadership at the meetings on so many occasions and the havoc and chaos he brought to those meetings. This is definitely not the type of leadership we voted for, we need, nor that we want. I have another sad and disgusting incident Saturday. 2005 Far Street. Numerous calls over the years. There's a dead mother that's been in the house for four days with her 14-year-old little daughter starving for four days. She couldn't get out of the house. She had to call somebody through the computer to get help. Car 21 has a report on that. There's been numerous calls to code enforcement, to the police. There's stolen U-Haul, drug activity, drug overdoses, dogs running wild, dogs left unattended, high grass, high weeds, no water. We need to do something. When people make calls and the neighbors call, we need somebody to answer the call to service. We have a mother that's dead and we have a 14-year-old girl that was in the house for four days while her mother rotted away. Not in our neighborhood, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dodson?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dodson. Compliments to Steamtown and the fest. I attended both of them at least two days and three days on the festival and it was pretty good. If you voted for Trump, please don't walk up to me and tell me how you didn't think he was going to be that way when I'm trying to listen to the music at the fest. It makes me sick. Okay. Streets. Now, somebody did make a mention that their street needed to be repaired. And when I thought back of what my street, what a nuisance it was, while the water company and the gas company got busy and didn't stay real busy. It's kind of, the only thing I would ask of the mayor is if you have a report of a bunch of potholes, get somebody down there and pound some asphalt in it and try and help them out. It's the utility companies have to, have to repave it. So what's the point in using hundreds of thousands of dollars to repave a street that the utility company is going to tear up next spring? If possible. On 5F, I'm concerned about bicycle paths through town. The rest is all water over the dam. I'm not worried about it. It's going to happen. No sense in bothering. But your former engineer, Pulchis, mentioned that trucks are going to have a hard time turning within 10 feet, delivery trucks and so forth. So, you know, I really would appreciate if we kept downtown as a business district and not a, not a playground. That's all. You know, it's, it always was a business district and if people want to live there, and I have aforementioned that if somebody wants to become a landlord downtown, then they should provide a parking space for each and every tenant. This city was built before automobiles. And now everybody owns two or three of them. And it's a problem. I could see when I moved into my neighborhood where the older kids who were practically as old as me, you know, four, three houses right next to each other. I'm scratching my head. Did you people get in a lot of fights, neighborhood arguments over who gets to park where when your four kids are 16 and 18 and they're driving and parking their cars everywhere? And they need it for a job or whatever. You know, you hear a lot about police. And this last federal funding has been withdrawn. Now, there's things that can cost you a little time or your taxes, a lot more property taxes to fund the police, to be able to provide police services. Or you could repel a potential serious criminal and wind up in court over it. You know, it's just, what would happen if somebody broke through the door and you just happened to have a gun and shot them? You have a trial to go to and that's all there is to it. So I appreciate that the police are well-funded and I can't pay any more property taxes. I have a little appeal on my unconstructible lot. They priced it out at $32,000. You can't build nothing on it. It's a standalone. It's really, I'll have to get a Mar-a-Lago to move in there or something. Election, anyone can promise. Anyone can promise. You could promise the second coming of Jesus, you know? It probably isn't going to happen, but you can promise it. Lots of fault gets found. Well, I'm a little tired of FBI in town. I'm a little tired of people being arrested two days after the last guys. Statutes ran out. And personally, I scratch my head. Do we just want to grab and fill our pockets for a change? Thank you. I'm not that unhappy with the mayor. I plan to vote for her.
Thank you. That's it for the sign-in slip. Anybody else wish to address counsel?
Tom Coymanuka. I see the launch of the $50 gift cards has started. Were you, Mr. Schuster, invited by the mayor, council president, to the press event for this launch? I ask because it was odd to me that the people invited for the $50 free goodwill publicity was the selected candidates for the open elected positions. This program was announced at city council meeting on July 9th, 2024. Why is the program beating, why was the program delayed? They announced it. And I expect, as I said before this body, the political gain, they would delay the rollout. Almost 14 months later and suspiciously close to election, here we go. Maybe it's improper to run this in an election year or at least on the doorstep of an election. And again, was asked, what was the criteria for the beautiful homes? Who made the decision? This was asked prior but never answered. Dodged but never answered. Moving on, I see from the Scranton Police Post on Friday, August 4th, 2023, that Elaine Cipriani is the city business administrator and the deputy mayor. I believe she still holds the title of deputy mayor. Has she ever acted as mayor when the mayor was in Washington or out of the country or when the mayor was delivering or just had her child? I ask this because she is barred from the duties of the position of deputy mayor. To put it in context, one of the qualifications for the US vice president is to be eligible to take over as the US president. The position of vice president requires that you qualify for the presidency. The city charter has requirements for the mayor. You must be a resident of the City of Scranton. A deputy mayor is to take over in the case of sudden illness or temporary incapacity. Cipriani by law cannot perform this function. She legally cannot meet the qualification and the criteria for the position of deputy mayor. That leads me to the mayor going on the campaign trail for Congress. Who's going to run the city in the absence if she's reelected? Cipriani can't. And that brings us back to city council and the mayor. And that brings us back to city council and the mayor. The mayor wants to run two jobs at the same time. If she wins the congressional seat, she certainly will say, stuff it to Scranton. And what, and why is a number of municipalities out there make you resign if you're going to try for another office? Because it's disingenuous to run for a four-year term that in all intentions that you do not intend to serve. It's unfair, destroys stability, and requires a costly special election. And that brings us to the next mayor. If Cognetti takes a congressional seat, and I hope she does, the city council president will be mayor until a special election can be held. President Smurl is up for election. Do the residents of Scranton want to risk electing Smurl from being the council president and then ascending to mayor? This is the reality we face in our next vote. Choose city council carefully. Last, a recap from the season cliffhanger. Last time on city council, I served the body. A lawyer contacted me from the city, playing both good cop and bad cop at the same time. Because it threatened the parking contract as it was passed improperly, I asked the judge to nullify it. I was threatened with the cost and the damages if they win, and that would financially ruin me. The attorney claimed my action was frivolous and said, and I asked him, well, what agreement can we come to? How can we mediate this? And he said, I must withdraw my complaint, fully with prejudice. But I said, I've looked at the issues, and I'm willing to modify it, but some claims are still valid. Can we work something out? He said, withdraw it with full prejudice by noon on Monday. He never even looked at the claims, he said. How does he know it's frivolous without ever looking at the legal documents? Well, I did amend the action to remove the parking vote, because I asked last time and received no explanation when the council voted before recess of what a motion to ratify is of something they passed. So I had to research it. Ratification serves as a formal process which a board legitimizes a prior unauthorized or improper action assuring alliances with bylaws and legal requirements. It's a legal mulligan to correct a violation. So a supposed frivolous claim of improper actions was repaired by ratification after my suit was filed. The ratification is a cure. It admits improper, admits improper action by use, and the amended suit continues. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, did you include all of council for that, those gift cards? Was all of council invited to that? Did administration invite all of council?
Were they what now?
Were they all invited to go to the gift card giveaway thing?
I believe they were.
Yeah, I believe they were too.
Mike Mancini, Scranton. Good evening, Scranton City Council, and the rest who pay attention to our local elected officials. Welcome to the season premiere of As the City of Scranton Turns. Character defines who you are by the way you carry yourself and treat others. Your name and what you make of it follows you, much like your shadow. Any election should not be determined by popularity or party. Local elections involve children, our way of life, and our future. It should be determined by character. Any local elected official who runs for reelection should show leadership by example, answering questions and concerns, choosing to be different, making the right decisions for the right reasons, identifying problems and having solutions. Any elected official should never put themselves above who elected them. Here in our city, we have someone not originally from here who earned our votes just to burn our votes. The atmosphere that she has created questions as if she really cares about our city. There are so many examples of her incompetence. Take a look at her roads. She has allowed P.A. Water to rip the shreds, our streets, with no oversight, using a third-party company to line her crosswalks in an election year. Five hundred thousand dollars out the door. Our best at DPW would have used the proper paint. Who would be the first to ask Mr. Waldenberg to call P.A. Water, remind them of her ordinances, also sending them a copy of the ordinance and getting them in once again before caucuses? Ask themselves, ask them the right questions, hold them accountable, let your city know how much you care. Council, before warned, start answering questions and asking the right ones. If you do not, then you condone it. Mediocre better be last season. Let us now talk about the current climate. We have lost and continue to lose so many amazing property owners because of the increased crime in the past five years. She has an extra set of locked doors because she's afraid of answering questions. Maybe someone will see the daycare room inside City Hall. We have no working cameras, nor anyone to watch them twenty-four-seven. She's neither proactive or reactive. She's just active for herself. We had a pill press in our city. Apparently, she knew the gang member because she took a picture with him. She never dove into any of our deep end pools, never rode a bike up and down the streets or in the alleys as a kid. She never even attended one of our schools in Scranton. She never walked in the St. Patrick's Day Parade as a child. We have so many great memories growing up in Scranton. She has none. Intellect would automatically tell you, do you need to know the picture in order to put the pieces together? Instead, Preoccupied Page and her expansion team lost many of those pieces. We have four less deep end pools. Because of them, we have an increase in police calls, where none of them are isolated incidents. Gangs, drugs, guns, someone stuck on stupid, and having their eyes wide shut, will vote for pandering Page. Get it together. There are better choices. The stigma days of not answering questions as if our city officials do not care are over. Only some questions can answer in an election year. Don't be like Page. Be better than her. We need the best from those who we elect. There are so many amazing people and their families in the city of Scranton. They deserve it. Good evening to the good people of Scranton. Good evening, Scranton City Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's what I thought. Everybody gets invited to everything. Thank you. That's all, Frank.
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have several comments. It was discussed tonight about the audit and public comment. I was going to request an update on the audit as well, and we heard from Mr. Smurl that all of the authorities have sent their audits in, and we're just waiting on the city auditor to get that together, so hopefully we get that by the end of September. In caucus, I discussed getting together with the zoning board. We met with them. They came into our chambers, we came into theirs, to meet with them to discuss any updates and amendments to be made to the two thousand twenty-three ordinance. Mr. Go-Bride is going to meet with their attorneys to discuss those ordinances and to see what amendments can be made specifically to that ordinance, including parking spaces, the square footage of apartments, Airbnb's in section three point five. Two months prior to our return tonight, we requested that the Scranton Recreation, or the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Executive Director come in to speak with us in caucus. She was hired some time ago, and we haven't heard from her since. Several meetings were scheduled, and several meetings were canceled. Mr. Waldenberg, where are we at with getting the executive director in?
We extended the invite to the director, the board, and the solicitor for next week.
Okay, so we may have the executive director.
As of this afternoon.
Okay, but possibly as early as next week.
As early as next week.
All right, thank you. With that being said, is it possible for you to get a list of the SRA meetings, whether they occurred or whether they were canceled? I've looked on the website. I haven't been able to find any meetings, any meeting minutes. I've told they've occurred, but I have no record if those meetings have actually occurred.
We'll get that information for you.
Thank you very much, if we could have some copies of those minutes. You did get me a property list of the SRA-owned properties, and there's about forty-seven on the list. Do we know if this is a complete list of all the properties owned by the SRA?
I believe so to date.
Okay, thank you. Also, I reached out to John Murray, and I got the update on the salary reimbursement for the executive director, and this was back in, I believe, May. So could we get just, could we get an updated salary reimbursement schedule for that director as well?
I will.
Thank you very much. Prior to our break, ABM or Car Park had said if any of the council members would like to have a meeting with them, they would be willing to set one up, and I talked to Mr. Go-Bride, so when you reach out to them, if we can get a date set for a meeting, I would like to meet with Car Park or ABM to discuss moving forward. Mr. Waldenberg, there's several issues that are pending from over our break, and I'll just follow up with you in email about those. In the capital budget, I was happy to see that for two thousand twenty-six, we do have funding that the city's going to go out for a local and LSA grant for an amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the pre-designed design and the construction oversight costs for the building for Engine Ten on East Mountain. Last year, we did get specific language in here about the building remaining in that location. Can we just ask that the administration add that language in here, that the building will remain on East Mountain?
I will.
Thank you. That is all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. A number of things. First, there were some responses we had received from questions and concerns we expressed prior to the August recess, and the, one of them that I had brought up was the slow speed of the website loading for the city of Scranton, and they took a look at it, and I believe it's since been repaired, because I know I personally haven't been experiencing an issue, but if anyone still is, to let us know. But I think that it's loading a lot faster now, and I'm glad that that was resolved. So thank you to IT for working on that. And then, let's see, I had a number of complaints, some of them along Prescott Avenue, that I've been working on for a while now, and that people continue to bring to me, so one of them is a business that was previously brought up, and I believe the inspectors had gone out that they had reserved parking signs out front. That was on the nine hundred block across the street from Mansors Avenue, or Mansors, and yeah, they still have those signs out, so I don't know if they removed them for a period of time, or if they just never removed them, but if we could have them back out there again to get them to remove the signs.
I will, they should have been removed by now.
So that parking is available to others. Yes, thank you. And then, I did see the demo list that was released, and so I'm happy to see some of the properties that are on there that definitely have been, need to be taken care of for quite some time now, but one of them was not on there that I was particularly interested in, that I've gotten a lot of complaints about in the past, and that was four twenty-nine Prescott Avenue. So I'm not sure why it wasn't on that demo list, but if you could take a look into the status of that property, I'd appreciate it.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And another one is the vacant SRA lot that's on Vine and Prescott that I had brought up prior to the break, and it's been brought to my attention that it is still overgrown, and so I believe DPW was to take care of that, or we had contacted DPW about it, and I don't think it's been touched.
That's right. We did ask that the barriers be removed and that the overgrown lot be mowed.
Okay.
I'll have to follow up as it hasn't been.
Okay, great, thank you. And I've received a complaint on Capous Avenue. There is a broken telephone pole that I was told has been there since prior to COVID, and it's, and I saw there's businesses around there. One of the businesses is looking at putting a new sidewalk in and doesn't want the new sidewalk to be destroyed by the, by that broken telephone pole being there still, so if we could find out how that could be removed. I know they had been in contact with PPL, and they were, PPL had said it was not their responsibility, of course, so if we could find out whose responsibility it is, so we could take care of it.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And there were a number of crosswalks being painted across the city, which I'm very happy to see. We'll obviously need to continue to maintain that, because after a few years, that, they tend to fade away quickly, so I think that's something we'll need to look towards in the budget for the future, continuing to maintain the crosswalks. What I did notice, a lot of them were around the Hill section, but the ones along Harrison Avenue weren't updated, and I'd previously talked to one of the departments about that, but I think, and they said it should be on the list, but it still hasn't been done. I know they've moved on to other neighborhoods, so I'd make sure it's not forgotten about, because that is a very busy street that a lot of people would like to be able to cross, but it's difficult to do so, and those crosswalks would make it safer.
I'll check into it.
Thank you. And, let's see, one more thing that I wanted to send to Parks and Rec was regarding Connors Park, so we've, my daughter loves playgrounds and loves the city parks, and so we try to get to as many as we can, and this weekend we went to Robinson, which she loved, and that was, it's looking beautiful over there. But we're also over at Connors Park and over in South Side, and there were a number of issues over there that I believe need to be addressed, and I'm not sure if anyone had sent them in before through three-one-one, but one of them is, there's a swing that you can lay on, not one that you sit on, but kind of like the version of an old tire swing, and that was totally broken, so I wouldn't want anyone to go on that and get injured. And then there was also around one of the apparatuses, the rubber surface was broken, kind of like what had happened at the splash pad previously, that had that rubber surface where it's torn up. And then the swings, there were, I think, like six swings, two of them were for like babies or toddlers. They were all very low to the ground, so if a bigger kid was on one of the other swings, their feet would be touching, and so it probably makes sense to have one or two of them lower, but perhaps not all of them, so if they could be reset to higher, so that more people and kids could enjoy them.
I'll reach out to Parks and Rec in the morning.
Thank you. That's everything that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandry, any more comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. So, you know, we hear this all the time, either in public comment, now I'm getting some emails about cars on sidewalks, parked on sidewalks illegally. We know it's illegal, but it seems to be all over the city now. Could you please reach out to the Scranton Police Department and, you know, I'm sure they're aware of it, but alert them that, what's the strategy for this, and how is this being taken care of?
I will, sir.
All right, thank you. So, and let's, I want to go back to the handicap sign legislation, because it might be a little confusing to some folks, but my understanding, you know, part of the legislation was to have the license plate reflective on the sign, so for that individual sign. I just want to know if that process is, was implemented, and if it was just a renewal, that wouldn't take place, so it would have to be a separate application. Is that my understanding, Mr. Go-Bride, or Solicitor Go-Bride?
Yes, Mr. McCandry, it's my understanding that it's a separate application for the reserved handicap parking than, other than the, just the regular handicap parking.
All right, so just for clarity's sake, it's a separate application process?
That's my understanding. I will certainly confirm that for you, but that's my understanding, and that's how it was anticipated to be implemented.
If you would please clarify that for me.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I got a question about it. Also, at the Wright Center, you know, I requested quite some time ago a traffic study. And my understanding is that the stormwater projects are taking priority with the city engineer. So could we see where they're at with that now as, on the list per se, where the Wright Center lies for that traffic study?
I'll check into it, sir.
Thank you. And also, prior to the summer, I brought up, or actually, of course, a resident brought up to me about a blighted property on 1158 Hampton Street. So, and it was a lot of overgrowth and brush, but now, and this, this resident sent me a picture, and the overgrowth now extends onto the sidewalk. And it's a safety issue with two schools being there that the students walking, you know, have to like walk closer to the road, and it's kind of a safety issue. So would you please send that to code enforcement to make sure that gets taken care of, especially since the kids are back to school?
I'll have them follow up.
And I have a picture I'll send you too that'll help. Yes, a lot of crosswalks were done. I know that I brought up recently railroad in Luzerne and Meridian in Luzerne. But in addition to that, there seems to be an issue with the turning lanes. So if you could please reach out to administration and see if, you know, they'll, they'd be able to redo the turning lanes at, because they're in need to be done.
I will.
Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McHenry. I have just an update on our finance meeting from last Wednesday. The interest earned on our tax dollars at to date is $531,000 and $531,540. So we are on track to reach our budgeted amount of $850,000. So I believe we will make that this year. All of the authorities, as we said before, have completed their audits. Everything is in the hands of our auditor now, so I hope we will be able to do this by the end of September this year. The only standout that I saw on overtime of any department was, of course, the Parks and Rec, and that was because of the code blue. And I hope this year's budget comes and we put more money in for that so that we don't continually have that, that one going way over budget on. I know we can't control the weather, but it seemed to have grown the past few years. Also, we had, this has to do with the Scranton Redevelopment Authority also. The director was supposed to have, we were supposed to form a vacant properties review committee. That was back in June of 2024, and then it went into September of 2024. That project was to start helping with blight and problems in our, throughout our neighborhoods. And that doesn't seem to be moving along at all either. So today, again, I did request that the entire Scranton Recreation, or the SRA Redevelopment Authority come to caucus again next week. So we'll see if they indeed do show up. And I'd like to know the progress that they've done or had in the past 24 months, any plans on what we're planning on doing in the future, and what their goals are. And are we going to get this blight committee off the ground? So there's a lot of stuff that seemed to have died, and that's really way over a year. I don't see why something like that would take this long. But while we were, while we were waiting for this, I've kind of moved forward with some ordinance. I did draft an ordinance for vacant property registrations. I gave it to our attorney. I will next week after he looks at it, share it with the administration and the other council members to see if we can move ahead with that because I don't believe we're going anywhere really fast with this lighted committee that we have formed. And that is all I have, Mr. Waldenberg.
5B for introduction and ordinance, approving and accepting the city of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter and file the council number 11 of 2024.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
Question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to authorize the city clerk to place a legal notice in the newspaper summarizing the proposed capital budget and to include locations where copies of the capital budget can be viewed by the public.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to place legal notice in the newspaper for the capital budget. On the question. I'm sorry.
Okay. I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the capital budget to be held on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, at 5:45 p.m.
Okay. I'm going to go back to all of, roll call for the last one. So all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved. And that is for Mr. Schuster's first motion.
All right. Then a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the capital budget to be held on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, at 5:45 p.m.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to schedule a public hearing on capital budget. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, transferring funds from inactive special city accounts and capital project fund account to the city's general fund and capital reserve fund in closing and abolishing such accounts.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the conveyance of 110 West Market Street parcel as noted to the Redevelopment Authority of the city of Scranton.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's multimodal transportation fund for up to $500,000 to be used towards the Capous sidewalk improvement project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's multimodal transportation fund for up to $1,264,658 to be used towards the Lacuna Avenue pedestrian and bike improvements project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, so I looked at this piece of legislation. It's $1.2 million. That's a lot of money. But I'm just concerned, or I just want clarification's sake, that, you know, the legislation says that it's for curbs, and it's going to help with stormwater, and it's for bike lanes and improvement for pedestrians. But I know during the walkability study, it was made mention that changing streetlights to stop signs. I want to know if, before, you know, I mean, of course, I'll move this tonight, but I want to know if that's somewhere embedded in that cost or in that plan that I just don't see. Could you please, you know, seek some clarification for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McHenry. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Riley Associates to perform engineering and design services for the Cloverfield project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor, introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, no business at this time. Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there is no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.